So it's time to begin the town meeting. Moderator of the night?
Yeah, it is on. Thank you.
No, mine. I got red and green now.
Okay. All right. If everyone would take their seat, I'm calling the annual town meeting to order. My name is Vincent Moreno and I'm the moderator of the 2023 annual town meeting. Just bear with me as I go through everyone here in the room, apparently. I would like to introduce, we've got the first selectmen sitting to my left, the Board of Selectmen, John Corangelo, Mitch Goldblatt, Ralph Okenquist, PJ Shanley, and Judy Wright Williams is not with us this evening. Board of Finance, we have Kevin McNabola, Kevin Houlihan. Is Delahy here?
He's here. I saw him walking.
I figured he would be here, so I'm just throwing his name out there. Any other members? Joe Nuzzo, Ajit Jain, and where, who am I missing there? That's it. Okay, good. Yeah, we're getting there. Director of Finance, Johnson Forelli, Tax Collector, Thomas Hurley, Town Engineer, Robert Britton, Highway Crew Chief, Don Foyer, myself, Town Attorney, Vincent Moreno, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Vince Scarpetti. Members of the Board of Education, we have with us the Chairman, Bill Kraut. I don't believe we have anyone else here. Oh, I'm sorry. Ken Ziman. Thank you, Ken. Frasier Hent?
Who's that over there? I can't see.
This is James.
Okay.
Ronette.
Thank you, Ronette. All right. And let's see. Chief of Police, Bob Gag.
Assistant Chief Max is here.
Thank you, Assistant Chief, for joining us. Register our voters. I believe they're outside. Janice Casey and Valerie Spinak. All right, let's continue on. If everyone will please stand, face the flag, which is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I now call on our town clerk, Mary Shaw, to read the notice of the annual town meeting. And you should add yourself to this list next time.
Okay. Okay. Town of Orange Notice of Annual Meeting. Notice hereby given to the legal voters and those persons qualified to vote in the town meeting of the Town of Orange that the annual town meeting of said town will be held on Wednesday, May 10, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. in the gymnasium of High Plains Community Center, 525 Orange Center Road, Orange, Connecticut, for the purpose of taking action at that time upon the following matters. Number one, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and convey land acquired by the town through foreclosure of tax liens or by deed in lieu of foreclosure of tax liens. To determine in accordance with Sections 12-4142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the installment dates, due dates for all property taxes, including the property tax on motor vehicles. Number three, to receive and discuss the report of the budget prepared by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. By virtue of the Town Charter, Section 2.6(c) and a vote of the Board of Selectmen, item three shall be voted on by machine ballot at an adjourned town meeting. Referendum to be held on Wednesday, May 17, 2023, between the hours of 6 a.m. and 8 p.m. at High Plains Community Center, 525 Orange Center Road, Orange, Connecticut, 06477. This was signed and dated by all the members of the Board of Selectmen on the 21st of April and attested by myself.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I haven't watched.
Oh, you keep going. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, pursuant to the statute, it be noted that for the record that the notice, the annual town meeting was published in both in Orange Town News on May 5 and as well as the Milford Orange Times on May 4. Both newspapers meet the circulation criteria required for the notice of the town meeting. The notice was also placed in the signpost in front of the town hall and uploaded to our town clerk's website under legal notices and displayed in the bulletin board outside the town clerk's office. Apposite ballots are available in the town clerk's office between 8:30 and 4:30 p.m. until May 16, which is the day before the referendum. Lastly, we ask that you kindly silence your cellphones if you haven't done it already. And Mr. Moderator, pursuant to Robert's rule of order and meeting conduct, I call for the orders of the day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Got it.
All right, the orders of the day shall be as follows. We shall discuss and vote on items number one and number two by virtue of the Town Charter. Item number three shall be voted on by machine ballot on Wednesday, May 17. Anyone who wishes to speak, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and you may speak for three minutes, unless there's a long line, and then we may have to cut it down. No, I don't think we're going to have that problem. All right, if, so try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Since there's a smaller group, we can take it from there. All right. And then any proper motions that are made from the floor, we will allow for that, and then we shall adjourn to the referendum. All right, is there, are there any, let's move on to item number one. Are there any motions to be made? Who is dealing with number one? To authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell or convey acquired, land acquired by the town through foreclosure of tax liens or by deed in lieu of foreclosure of tax liens.
Moderator, Mitch Goldblatt, 291 Drummond Road. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Mr. Shanley. All those in favor?
All right, any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm again trying to get to watch a game tonight. Is there, is there any discussion? Would anyone from the public like to come to the podium? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, item number two, to determine in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the installment due dates for all property taxes, including the property tax on motor vehicles. Is there a motion? I'm going to recognize our tax collector, Thomas Hurley.
Tom Hurley, Tax Collector, 1050 Garden Road. Per Connecticut General Statute 12-144A, payment of general ledger 2022 motor vehicle taxes shall be payable in one installment due one July 2023. General Ledger 2022 supplemental motor vehicles will be due in one installment on one January 2024. And per Connecticut General Statute 12-142, real estate taxes for the general ledger 2022 shall be split into two equal installments due one July 2023 and one January 2024, accepting payment of taxes not in excess of $100, and any penny rounding shall occur on the first installment. And per the same statute, personal property taxes for general ledger 2022 shall be split into two equal installments due one July 2023 and one January 2024, accepting payment of taxes not in excess of $100, and any payment rounding shall occur on the first installment.
Thank you, Mr. Tax Collector. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Selectman Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Mitch Goldblatt, a couple of quick questions for you.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen has passed a couple of ordinances that you have requested in the past. Can you explain to the public what the implications of those are about certain things that are not going to be taxed?
Okay, basically, the first one was overpayments. Overpayments of $4.99 or less, the town is just going to accept because it costs us more to process. The other side of that coin, if a taxpayer at the June 30 point has a $5 or less still sitting on the bill, we will zero it out.
Thank you. And the other question I have is, will the tax collector, through, I guess, the town clerk, be able to alert residents through the website and through the notification process when that second, well, actually, when both taxes are due, especially the second one, which seems to be a problem. Sometimes I remind people.
We have a new system that will be in place for the second of the period. It will not be live until as late as maybe one December. For July, we have the notices in the newspaper when all the taxes and everything are in there. We have three notices that are required by law, five days before, seven days after the first, and then five days before the end of the, before the grace period's over.
Okay, so if it's the second payment that's due in January, is there a way to put an alert out on the website to the?
We're hoping to, well, yes, we are going to do that. I mean, we have been doing that. We've been putting alerts out on Orange Patch, and we've been trying to get things to the newspapers to make sure people are aware of that. The new system, provided they sign up for an account with us, they will get emails to that effect, and they will be able to get text emails to the, text mails and whatever else. So the new system coming in will be able to do a lot of that, and we're hoping that it cuts down on a lot of the, we forgot.
Right.
Or we.
Now, Tom, that's great. Thank you very much. And I urge everyone who has not already signed up with the website for alerts to do so, because you get plenty of good information, including reminders of when taxes are due. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? abstained? The ayes have it. All right. Item number three, to receive and discuss the report of the budget prepared by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. Mr. Houlihan. The Board of Finance Chairman, Mr. Houlihan.
Very brief. Good evening, Kevin Houlihan. We had our budget hearing on August 20, April 20th, a couple of weeks ago, where the budget, the book you have this evening, was discussed in detail. The bottom line is, if the budget's approved, you will have a 1.22% tax decrease in the next fiscal year. The vote is on May 17, next Wednesday, and for those who aren't aware, the AMITI budget portion of our, of this budget was passed last week, so that's all set and it has no, will have no impact on the rest of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Houlihan. Are there?
Kevin.
Any questions before you, don't go running away so fast.
You know what my question, you know what my question's going to be?
And I have the note. There were no, from the budget presented on April 20 till, till what we voted on next week, there were no changes made.
Kevin, before you, any other questions from the floor?
I was just going to let him sit down first.
All right. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this banner?
Thank the Board of Finance for all their hard work. And, you know, being a former member, I know how much time it takes. So thank you guys for all the hard work you put in.
The Board of Finance does a great job. You heard what Kevin said. There is a decrease, and that's driven by several things. One of them is our share at AMITI dropped by a little bit, which is done by the student attendance on October 1 of this past year is how they set it for the upcoming year, which is a good thing. If it passes, two years ago, the mill rate was 33.7 change, and then it dropped last year to 32.7 change. And this year, if this budget passes, it will drop the mill rate to 32.31, I think, as I recall. So it's a good process there, and they've worked really hard to make that possible. And, you know, there's some shortfalls. There was a shortfall of $800,000 in this budget that we're currently in, because that's what they had built into the budget for a return from AMITI. But since there isn't a return from AMITI any longer, that was a hole. But with the drive of our economy, as our grocery bills and gas bills and electric bills and all go up, so do interest rates. So the estimated return on interest income went from 46,000 for the year to about 800,000. So that interest income is what filled the hole that was left by not receiving a refund of unexpected, unexpended funds from AMITI. So that has worked out really well. And then for those of you that, if you were here for the selectmen's part of the meeting earlier, there was discussion about purchasing two new vehicles for the police department, and the Assistant Chief and I spoke to it, and the money for that is coming from the road duty account where we charge contractors for hiring the police officers, and there's quite a bit of funds in that account. And so as we complain about all those cable trucks all over town and some of the debris they've left behind, it also funded that road duty account pretty heavily. And this is money beyond what we pay the officers for picking up extra duty work. And you're buying two new explorers out of that, to the tune, it'll probably be $100,000 or a little better by the time they're fit out. So that inconvenience of those cable trucks does have a positive side for the town also. So as we keep moving forward, things are okay. The town is doing well, and I think we're going to stay on that track.
All right. Now, ordinarily, we would adjourn to referendum. However, I understand there is a motion, or two motions to come from the floor, and I recognize our tax collector.
Tax Collector, Tom Hurley, 1050 Garden Road. Per Connecticut General Statute 12-144, payment of taxes of not more than $100. Be it moved that any property tax not in excess of $100 shall be collected in one single payment due with the general ledger 2022, one July 2023 installment. And that is in concert with the accepting payment of taxes not in excess of $100. That was in the earlier motion, but this fills that hole.
And is that your, your complete motion?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Why was that? I thought that was included in the first motion we've passed already. And it usually is, year after year.
It's a, it's a different statute, and the statute was not covered in that other.
Yes, the tax collector felt it was not covered within because that, that action item specifically referenced.
Different statute.
12-142, not 12-144. And I didn't think it was appropriate to roll this in and change the first motion since it was not published that way. So we're doing it as a motion from the floor, as a separate item, and in the future, we will have a combined motion.
I thought we had in the past. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes. So this is really just a technicality to fill a, to fill a clerical, I'll say error here. But, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And you're all set, Mr. Tax Collector?
I'm done. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
On, well, what's your, technically, yes, but we'll, we'll let you, do you have a question? Well, you need to go to the mic and say your name, address, and state your question or make your comment.
Good evening, everybody, and I apologize if I'm delaying you from, from your game.
No, it's okay.
I'm Robert Lim, 956 Corn Cob Lane. Going back to a statement that you made, Mr. Ziole, about the AMITI budget and how the surplus is not being returned, I know this is a point of discussion almost year round at this point. My understanding is that the AMITI Board of Education approved, providing what would have been the refund through a credit to the monthly bill that the town owes. And I'm hoping somebody here might be able to kind of clarify where we stand with that.
The Finance Director is not here tonight, and I don't know, Audrey, if you have that answer. I do not have it. They were supposed to apply it to one of the last months of the fiscal year. I don't know if it's been done yet or if it's coming. April?
Yeah, we're here in April. It'll be April.
Okay.
He's correct.
Okay. All right, perfect. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes people here, you know, we're not getting the money back. So, okay. Thank you.
All right. So now is there a motion to adjourn? That was made? Was it seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening.
7:53.